Ready, ready?
The creek, yeah, the creek is great.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this regular meeting of the Forest Hills School District Board of Education, February 26, 2018, 7:00 PM. Mr. Giuffre, would you please call roll?
Mrs. Barber?
Here.
Ms. Choice?
Here.
Dr. Heiss?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Frumman?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Your exits are right over here, and that's it, right? So, there, that's the exit. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Giuffre?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mr. Frumman?
Yes. Approval of minutes, beginning at item 3.1.
We move to approve the minutes of our organizational meeting on January 3rd, the Business Advisory Committee of January 11th, the special meeting on January 12th, and the previous regular board meeting of January 22nd, 2018.
Second.
Mr. Giuffre?
Yep.
All right. Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Frumman?
And correspondence, item 4.1. Mr. Prebles?
Yes, I'm pretty excited to announce congratulatory letter from Julie Davis from OAESA, which is the Ohio Association of Elementary School Administrators. There are four, excuse me, four school buildings in our district that received a notation from her office, that they have moved to the second round of the OAESA Hall of Fame selection for their schools. We will learn more about this on April 16th, when they will be officially awarded to those schools that will be winners of the competition. We'd like to congratulate staffs in those buildings, certainly the students and their parents. If our four schools make it to the finals, then there will be a luncheon in June, and then they will be highlighted at next year's professional conference and trade show on June 13th through the 15th at the Hilton Columbus at East, and so we'd like to congratulate those schools. We don't tell you who they are just yet, but four of them have made it to the next level, and we're hopeful that here in another month, we'll be able to share those schools that were successful in that competition. Also, I know that he doesn't like to have this information presented in the public because it's not why Mr. Smith does what he does, but the Ohio School Board Association has identified Randy Smith as having achieved a 15-year milestone in school board service. This is a great accomplishment and longevity to be proud of, and the Southwest Region Ohio School Board Association wants to honor that service at their annual spring conference, and that will be held on March 13th at the Warren County Career Center, so congratulations, Mr. Smith, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Mr. Giuffre, anything?
I do. The Auditor of State, Auditor Yost, recognized Forest Hills once again for its 2017 financial statements with the Award of Distinction, which is as high of an award as you can get from anyone you want it from, which is wonderful. It's not the first time the districts received this award, but it has to do with the excellence in financial reporting and the excellence of the work that the folks in the Treasurer's Office have done throughout the year.
Thank you, and congratulations again.
Good job.
Frumman? I know that, before you go, I have one item. This is the Ohio School Boards Association Journal. If you recognize the gentleman on the front, he is the president of the Ohio School Boards Association, and we are fortunate to have Mr. Smith, both representing us at the state level and here in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have some correspondence.
I knew you did.
I received a number of emails about a very sensitive and timely issue, a number of emails regarding school safety and security, based on the mass murder in Florida on February 14th. Many are a result of my participation in OSBA, but I wanted to acknowledge the correspondence. This is an important issue that should be on our priority list, and many other issues I would think will pale in comparison to this issue, so I'll address this under Board Discussion in item 10, but I did want to acknowledge the correspondence.
Thank you. Any other board members? No. The procedures for public commentary. This is, this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, is not considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting, as indicated in the agenda under public commentary. Individuals who would like to share their opinions or comments concerning a topic on the Board's agenda should list the agenda item or topic on a public participation sheet. They look like this. Sign your name, include your address and telephone number, and give the sheet to our administrative assistant. You'll be recognized during the public commentary period. Remarks should be addressed to the Board as a group. They should be within three minutes this evening, because we have a number of them. If several people wish to speak on the same topic, and they do, the time may be adjusted at my discretion, and we will get to that shortly, but first, much more importantly, 5.1, the Nagel Middle School 8th Grade Orchestra. Ms. Cox?
Mr. Frumman, I would like to thank Kennedy Alder, who played violin, Victor Nika, who played violin, Emily Buesing, who played viola, Jenny Calhoun, cello, and Seth Kelly, the bass. We'd like to thank all of you for coming to our board meeting tonight and getting us off to a great start. I'd also like to thank Jessica Cox, who is the instructor who's with us this evening. Thank you all very much, it was wonderful.
So, it is extremely fitting that we've got a musical accompaniment this evening, because what's really cool is we're about to present a candidate for graduation, and if you haven't been to a graduation in the Forest Hills School District, we always have musical accompaniment from our students, and so it's really cool, especially because, you know, some of you, you might be playing at those commencement ceremonies in just a few years, and it's no less exciting for a principal to stand up in front of folks now, as it is in May, when we have our students achieving and obtaining all the credits that they need in order to graduate. And so this evening, we have one individual who has completed all of his requirements for graduation, and his name is Hunter Mason. And I've not seen Hunter, but maybe he got in late. Is Hunter present in the back? Okay, so he's not here, but I'm going to read a quick something about him, because we have lots of really great teachers who could have written lots of different things, but I touched base with one of his teachers, who I know had a lot of great memories with Hunter, and his name is Mr. Hoon, he's currently working at Nagel, and he says this about Hunter. He says, "Hunter is a success story for Anderson High School. You would not find a more genuine, caring person. Where many students would have given up and thrown in the towel, with the exceptional support of his family and friends, Hunter rolled up his sleeves and kept working. School may not have been easy, surely may not have been the most fun way to spend his time, but the growth that Hunter has shown is immeasurable by data, test scores, or GPA. The person that is being honored tonight has checked the boxes for graduation, but more importantly, has grown into a tremendous man, whose future is undoubtedly bright. There is not a student more deserving to receive their diploma, their diploma, and is yet another esteemed alum of Anderson High School." So, with this, Hunter will be deferring his diploma, but we would like to offer congratulations to him, so if you would, please.
Thank you, and Mr. Spencer, if you would, for Mr. Fellows, so we can honor our National Merit finalists.
So, this is a really amazing thing. We're joking with some of our kids, because they're starting to be at the board meetings as much as we are. They're absolutely fantastic, and we'd like to go ahead and pull them up, up front at this time. If you would, please, from Anderson High School, Sarah Crable, Yvonne Delgado, Zach Thickenworth, come on up in front, guys. Liam Gallagher, Kaitlin Huang, Charlotte Moore, Sean Schaefer, Margie Stringfellow, and Madeline Whites. And from Turpin?
From Turpin, Patrick Bentley, Max Egan, Erica Langen, Catherine Murphy, and Anna Nolan.
So, each year, all of our juniors in the Forest Hills School District take the PSAT, and many take it across the country. In fact, it's about 1.6 million individuals who take the PSAT, and of that, less than 1% actually qualify as semifinalists. Of that, a fewer percentage actually go on to reach the finalist standing. And in front of you, you see, and I don't have all the data, but I'm pretty certain that this is the largest group to receive a finalist standing in the National Merit Scholarship Competition in Forest Hills history. It's a significant feat, it's a great accomplishment. Mr. Spencer and I could not be more proud, and I know that there are administrators from all levels here, K-12, and when we get your guys' names, the first thing we do is we give a huge shout out to all of the elementary and middle school teachers as well, and make sure that they understand, because they don't always see the end product when they're opening ketchup packets and all that stuff at lunch, you know? They do a lot more than that, by the way. But this is truly remarkable, and to have this number in the state of Ohio, they released this semifinalist bulletin, and it's got all the lists of people throughout the state in, and actually throughout the country. In Ohio, I believe we rank seventh across the state in total number of finalists, and in Cincinnati, it's, we're fourth. And, guys, we could not be more proud of you and all of your accomplishments, and certainly are excited for what you've got in store for you. So...
Truly, this is the best of the best. When you look again, as Mr. Fellows said, across the nation, I think there's a total of 15,000 people, students, that receive a finalist status, and we are very well represented. So, getting so proud, can't congratulate you guys enough, for not only you, but your parents as well. So, at this time, the superintendent recommends the Board commend the following students who have been named finalists in the 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program for their achievement in distinction, and a certificate of commendation be presented to them.
So, before we do this, it feels so good to stand next to them. I'd like to congratulate all of you on behalf of the board, and certainly to the public after we pass out the awards, but I'd also like to say something to parents, as a parent myself. This is a very special day for you, because of the unconditional love and support and effort that you have put in to this evening. It's also a great day for our school district, because beyond the students just standing here tonight, they represent all that's good about education, and furthering your reputation, taking it seriously, and moving on. And so, we're very thankful that these students have been with us, and very thankful that we've had the opportunity to work with them, and to say that they are ours, so to speak. We wish you all the best in your future, and thank you again for your efforts to help create our school, and I'd also like to thank our teaching staff for all the work that they do. So, thank you and congratulations.
I make a motion, I make a motion to commend the National Merit finalists as named, and present them with a certificate of commendation.
Second. Mr. Giuffre?
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Frumman?
Yes. Congratulations, everyone.
I was making you off the gauntlet. Congratulations.
So, before you all sneak out of here, can we have the parents stand up? I think they deserve a round of applause, too. You're all supposed to stay for the rest of the mating. You all can leave if you'd like. Item 7.2, Global Citizenship Scholarship. Is Ms. Lavert here? Ah, there she is.
It is only fitting that this young lady is following these wonderful National Merit honors, because I expect to see her here as well, soon. This evening, I have the pleasure of telling the Board about an amazing young lady, that you have been so supportive of our global travels and the things that we have been able to accomplish for our students, and the opportunities that are being provided for students here in Forest Hills, but Anna has kicked it up to a new level tonight. And it's an evening that we'd like to make sure that the Board is willing to hear a little bit about her, and give her an opportunity to be thanked publicly for her great opportunities. Anna had the opportunity to travel with EF through a global program here that the Board has been very helpful in making sure they support, but also during her trip, we also worked really diligently with students to create a project that is graded by an organization then to help students learn, as well as earn high school credit. Her program and project was selected as one of the top five in the world, and was highlighted in their Facebook page back in the fall, and that was, within itself, was amazing. And then Anna found out about the Global Citizenship Program, and she applied. And it's with great honor that tonight, that we know, I know Anderson High School has already given her the balloon treatment and lots of surprises, but Anna won one of the Global Citizenship Scholarships, and will be going to Berlin this summer as a representative of a student of the United States. I want to pause on that and give her a big round of applause. I know that many students would like to have the same opportunity, and just so you know, this trip was sold out, we were looking for some opportunities as well. One of the things about the institute will happen is it's a three-day overcourse, and during this, the guest speakers this year at this will be Jason Latmer, Glenn Keane, and Randy Zuckerberg. During this, students will have the opportunity to just consider the role of technology advances and the evolution of our past, present, and future. Anna will work with other students from across the globe, over 127 countries will be represented in Berlin, and to come up with solution-based projects and ideas to help her, probably, as I know from her other project, do amazing, great things. So, at this time, I would like to ask the Board to recognize and commend Anna McClellan. We have an award here for you, and I think, Dr., excuse me, are we, do we have my vote first, are we good? Okay. Do we have a motion?
We haven't had a motion. Do you want to give her the award first?
Sure, I can do that, however you'd like.
Sure.
All right, awesome. So, with this, I'm going to give Anna her award, congratulations. I'm sorry about that.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to commend Anna McClellan, Look McLennan, for her achievement, and present her with a certificate of commendation.
Second. Mr. Giuffre?
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Frumman?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I did want to... I just want to have a freshman represent not only Anderson High School, but our nation. We're so happy that you could do that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I know Anna's mother's here in the back, and I want to thank you, because, you know, great parents help us have great kids, and we appreciate that so much.
Item 8.1, Anderson High School Film Students. Mr. Weddle?
Mr. Weddle, I don't think is with us tonight, but as the Board has developed work plans for the year, one of those is a continuation of the good things that are happening in our school district. We call it the value proposition portion of the Board's work plans, and we've been working with Anderson High School and Chad Weddle and students to develop videos of our school district, to continue with the branding, and continue with the image of our school district, and the good things that are happening here in Forest Hills. So, Emily Newman, Alex Carroll, Katie Hen, Austin Bailey, Griffin Moran, Erica Mulcahy, and Lindy Rutledge are students that produce the video that you're about to see, and it is one of a series. Our series includes STEM and Project Lead the Way, technology innovation, career education, and the district's larger strategic plan, big picture view. What you're going to see this evening is about the district's learning commons, and so for those of you, again, in the audience, this is produced by students, totally by students of our school system, and the many good things that we have going on. So, we'd like to thank Mr. Weddle and all the students for what you're about to see and the future videos that will be coming out.
So, what we're trying to do is change the traditional library into a more 21st century place for students.
Big thing is, we have so many other ways to access information now, we have so many other ways to construct and create our own representations of what we're learning. So, having all the digital resources available to us as well, has kind of led to a shift of having a single-purpose space to multiple-purpose space.
We got to make presentations for stuff, and in many different ways, like we could have made it animation or like a drawing, have to be able to make a thing, where you learn absolutely nothing. And so, especially as a makerspace, this place is completely at all times a place where things are torn down and rebuilt, and where they're learning that other people have great ideas that can contribute to how you should rebuild that.
I think one of the nicest things about it is the students can use the center's in flexible ways, so the way that they want to work.
I really like the 3D printing and the atmosphere, and how people are always kind and welcoming.
We wanted the media center to become a reflection of the individuality of the students. We wanted it to be a place for creativity. We wanted it to be a place where learners could fluidly move in and out of different modalities, where they're working cooperatively, where they're working individually.
When you walk in here with these students, we're doing all sorts of different activities. The one piece that we have on top of that is where students really pursue different avenues that they just know.
I like being able to like move around and communicate with my friends and stuff.
Forest Hills Foundation's been very involved in this. We have our PTAs and our PTOs that have been extremely important in this process.
We really did a lot of research, and, I mean, we talked with a panel of engineers, we talked with several different businesses that came in.
We are matriculating up through the system, so that as students get to the middle school and high school, they're becoming more independent with their learning.
We put students in an active role where they're truly stepping forward and taking control of their own learning, with us as not only facilitators, but kind of a collaborative partner.
We're taking the aspects and the things that we're learning in the elementarys and the middle schools, and we're developing them into more packages for students, and opportunities for students to guide their own learning.
You get to like work with your friends, and you get to like make something for them. You have to get to be like creative with it.
We have to become the trendsetter again. We have to show them that model is really what is needed in order for individuals to be incredibly successful, and that that is our goal, 100% of the time.
We want kids to be in control of their learning, to be independent, and to be energized by the new things that they learn. Through these types of media centers, and types of arrangements in our school district, it's important that kids enjoy learning.
So, Mr. Frumman, I was going to ask if we could add a line item to the superintendent's budget for makeup?
I'm not quite sure we have enough.
I want to thank Chad Weddle and the students that are involved. This was our first production, there are more to come, and that is not only an example of what we're doing in our learning commons, but what you saw here this evening is what our students are capable of on a daily basis, and the things that they're getting involved in. So, as students are involved in makerspace, as they enjoy opportunities with STEM and digitized equipment and media in their classroom and technology, they're developing skillsets that can produce things like we saw this evening. that can produce things like we saw this evening. And I think that's just as important as the video itself. So I'd like to, again, thank all those involved and prepare everyone for additional videos that will be coming out, and then all of these will be placed on our website for anyone who would like to learn about our school district when they're making decisions about Forest Hills. So, again, thank you very much.
I don't suppose any of the kids that participated in making that are here tonight, are they?
I don't think so. They're making videos.
I'll have to thank them for it.
Yes, well, I will. I promise.
We're at the point of public comments. That's item 8.1. 9.1, right. We switched them. Thank you. We're going to limit the discussion to three minutes, and I will cut you off at three minutes. I apologize in advance. It's not my intention to be rude. It's my intention to give everybody an opportunity to speak, but to also move the meeting along this evening. So, young or old, I will cut you off. I'm sorry. The other thing I want to mention, I know we have quite a number of people that want to speak about the Anderson High School mascot issue. It's not on the agenda this evening. There was no intention that it'd be on the agenda this evening. We had a work session on February 15th, and it was one of many items that the board said is a priority this year. There will be a committee that is established. The committee will do some work, and the committee will make a recommendation to the board that the board will act on sometime in the future, but we do not have an intent, intention of discussing that issue this evening. But you're welcome to. So with that, we will first hear from Tricia Mullen.
Hi.
And you're keeping time.
All right. Hi, my name is Tricia Mullen, and I'm a parent of students at Wilson, Nagel, and Turpin as well. And my, I know this is not on the agenda tonight either, but the healthy school start time issue is one that's dear to my heart, especially with students in 7th and 9th grade currently. And I want to commend you and applaud you, the entire district, for the efforts toward healthier school start times for our students. It gives them the best possible chance for good mental health, for good academic success. I mean, you know all the research. I'm not going to repeat it all, but I just want to say thank you. And then also just, I wanted to request also that the start time that is recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics and many other national health organizations is 8:30, and I don't know if that's in the plans, but I just strongly request that we do it right and not have to come back and revisit this issue at another time. So, just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm a student at Turpin High School, and I also wanted to talk about the school start time issue. I was concerned about the effects it would have on extracurricular activities. I'm not very certain how much the end time would be affected as well, but I'm a member of the theater department as well as other extracurricular activities, and sometimes we don't get out of school until 9:00 or 10:00 p.m. at night, and I just wanted to make sure that whatever happens, it does reflect all the after-school activities and make sure we do have time for them.
Thank you. All right, I apologize if I'm not saying this right. I'm having trouble reading it. Is it Tara Burl? Burke?
Yeah, my name is Tara Burke, and I really wanted to reiterate what Tricia had to say about the early start, school start times and moving towards a healthy school start time. I'll just take just a moment to say thank you to the administrators who have spent so much time and effort in looking into this really important thing. And I just wanted to come speak today to sort of represent those families out there who really do feel strongly about this issue, and we just want you to know that there are a number of us who feel strongly about this, that it's an important step in the right direction. But as Tricia said, you know, I at least would really appreciate it if you would look a little deeper and look at what the research is suggesting, which my understanding is 8:30 or later. So I'd appreciate that, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I graduated from Anderson High School in 2003, where I was heavily involved in drama and music. I pursued that passion at Indiana University's Jacob School of Music, where I received my bachelor's and master's in vocal performance and arts administration. I moved back to Cincinnati and began a nonprofit that brings live opera to schools and communities that lack the arts programming I was so fortunate to receive in this school district. We teach children that opera is a story set to music. We teach children that the words we sing have meaning, and what we teach children with our words is important. Redskin is a racial slur, as defined by every modern dictionary. That word is important. That word has meaning. We cannot debate a word that is defined as a racial slur any longer. Our context doesn't matter. Our intention doesn't matter. Our opinions don't matter. What matters is that for decades, organizations including the Intertribal Council of Five Civilized Tribes, the National Congress of American Indians, the U.S. Department of Education, and the United Nations, among others, have repeatedly and emphatically requested the removal of these mascots as they negatively affect the mental health and success of their young people. Shouldn't we honor their request? We are not honoring them or celebrating them when we normalize a derogatory name. We are bullying them, and we are inviting into our community the blatant and corrosive racism exhibited by students in our neighboring districts as recently as a few weeks ago. Young people are listening and learning. Anderson High School has a proud tradition of excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts. A mascot did not earn those awards and accolades, and a mascot is not a part of our tradition. I was fortunate to attend the strategic planning meeting two weeks ago. I listened to a board fully committed to supporting the students, teachers, and staff of this district. I listened to a board committed to including measures for a renewed focus on diversity, mental health, and building partnerships in the community. I listened to a board looking ahead towards this meeting and anticipating the need for speedy resolution. I listened to a board looking into the financial practicalities of rebranding and the opportunities companies like Adidas offer schools that have dedicated, that have decided to change an offensive Native American mascot. I listened to a board quickly running out of reasons to keep this divisive and derogatory mascot. It's time, change the mascot. I'm grateful to this board for establishing a committee to address this issue and provide a recommended action. I would like to know who will choose these committee members, how, and by what process will these committee members be chosen? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm a parent of two Anderson High School juniors. I would also like to thank you for considering the issue of early, or later, healthier start times for our students. That's not why I came tonight, but I think that that is a wonderful idea, and I'm glad that it is on your to-do list. But tonight, I came here to thank you for including a discussion about the Anderson High School mascot as a priority under your 2018 strategic plan. As a parent of two Anderson juniors, I respect that tradition is very important in our community, and I don't believe for a minute that anyone who supports the current mascot does so out of any form of racism. I believe this is an issue of a lack of education in our community. I don't think our Anderson students, staff, and families who support this mascot realize that they are chanting a racial slur that is equivalent to the N-word in the Native American community. As you'll hear from my daughter soon, the National Congress of American Indians is eager to serve as an educational resource for our community. I look forward to a respectful dialogue on this subject during the course of this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Emma Bushman, as you said before, and I am a junior at Anderson High School, and that was my mom before. I have a letter here to the Forest Hill School District from Maria Givens of the Core Delaine Tribe, who works at the National Congress of American Indians. In the interest of time, I will just share part of it and leave you with the full copy. Dear Forest Hill School District, on behalf of the National Congress of American Indians, I write to ask the Forest Hill School District to remove and replace the offensive Native American mascot of Anderson High School. Extensive social science research has proven that the promotion of the R-word significantly harms Native Americans, especially Native American youth, evident in lower self-esteem, increased incidence of school-based bullying and violence. The National Congress of American Indians has formally opposed the use of Native mascots with the R-word being the most offensive since 1968. We recognize that often these harmful mascots and names are perpetuated because their supporters don't fully understand the breadth of the harm they cause. NCAI is ready to serve as a resource to provide the understanding to the Forest Hill School District Board, its students, and its teachers. Please do not hesitate to reach out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amy Bushman, and I am also a junior at Anderson High School, and I believe that we should change our mascot. For three years, I have not been able to support my high school because of our mascot. I do not wear the spirit wear. I do not chant songs during the games because I am ashamed of the mascot and what our school represents. I want to support my school, but I can't. I feel that I've had to miss out on a great part of my high school experience just because of our mascot. For those who are reluctant to change the name because of tradition, I would also like to point out that Anderson's mascot has already been changed once. I believe that our original mascot was the Commons, but it was changed to honor a principal who attended Miami University, who has since changed their mascot to the Red Hawks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm the executive director of Gap, Greater Anderson Promotes Peace. Gap is committed to honoring diversity, encouraging understanding, and promoting inclusion in our community. Gap has followed the issue of the Anderson High School mascot since we were founded in the fall of 1999. In 2003, Gap made a published, published statement asking that the mascot be retired. We were present during Dr. Raymond Terrell's report on his diversity audit of the Forest Hill School District in 2005. At that time, Dr. Terrell wrote in his report that the school district must address the mascot issue. Since then, and as recently as January 18th of this year, we have met with Forest Hill School District superintendents, principals, and board members, offering updated research on the negative effects of derogatory mascots and the benefits and opportunities available for change. Today, a window-up opportunity appears to have opened. Gap encourages the students and administrators of Anderson High School and this Board of Education to seize this moment to make a change. It is not about blame. It's about an opportunity to do the right thing for the future. It is about showing leadership. It is about making our schools as safe a place as possible for every student. We know that at least one Native American family in Anderson Township, the Metz family, will have a high school student here in 2019. This is an opportunity to make sure that he will feel welcome. It is an opportunity to let go of something that no longer works. We spoke recently with Cooperstown Central School in Cooperstown, New York, which also had a Redskins mascot. Students said with the old mascot, they felt embarrassed and behind the times when they were competing with other high schools. In 2013, they became the Cooperstown Hawkeyes. As Mr. Frumman said, there is no benefit in being the last school standing on an issue. Changing the mascot doesn't change who we are as a community. It doesn't change the excellence of Anderson High School or the pride its students and alumni have for their school. Gap believes that the effect of changing the name will actually be something of great pride, and we have a number of resources and contacts that also may be useful in your discussion and in the committee. Next year, my grandson will be proud to be a member of the Anderson Marching Band, and I will be proud if it is possible to see that we are moving forward with a new mascot for an already outstanding school. Thank you.
You know, it's not our practice to generally comment during the public comment section, and I'm not going to do so today either, other than to say, I really appreciate the thoughtful comments we had from everybody on all the topics this evening. Really well-presented, and I appreciate you staying within the timeframe and not making me rude, too. Thank you. Board discussion. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I want to take just a couple of minutes to talk about what I mentioned earlier in the meeting. And I also want to start off by saying I want to be crystal clear with our community. This is not an indication that there we see any flaws in the safety and security plan that is in place within Forest Hills. For example, just in the past year, we've completed security-approved security entrances to all 10 of our buildings. We spent considerable sum of money on that, thanks to the bond issue that was passed a few years ago. So, again, I'm confident that we have things in place that some of the public is aware of, some of the public's not aware of for security reasons. So that's not where I'm going with this, but it's just that on the state level, and quite frankly, the national level, the events in Florida on February 14th have opened a window of opportunity for us to move forward with some issues on safety and security. Just as I mentioned at the State Board of Education, or rather, the Ohio School Board Association meeting that took place Friday and Saturday, we spent a considerable amount of time addressing this, and I will summarize some of the outcomes. One thing that we did is asked for a resolution that will go out to all Ohio Boards of Education with a request to pass and send a copy to legislators. Actually, it just came out from the attorneys late this afternoon. I have a copy on your desk.
3:25 p.m.
There you go. Well, as is practice, I'm not going to ask this board to approve something you haven't had a chance to look at in advance. So you have a copy of it here. Please take a look at it if you've got any questions, but I would really strongly encourage us to do this. And again, you may be saying, well, gee, resolution, well, what's that going to do? The value of this is if all the school districts in Ohio do pass this or something like it, it gives ammunition to our lobbyists to go to the state legislators and beyond to ask for action. The resolution asks for additional funding to pay for safety and security measures, mental health support, training for school district staff, and it does go into some sensitive areas as far as protecting students from violence. So we can address that next month. The second thing, action step that came out of our meeting, is I've asked the Ohio School Board Association to pursue setting up a statewide school safety and security solutions summit. The reason I emphasize the word "solutions" is I don't know about you guys, but I've been part of meetings where it's a lot of talk, 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 and there's no action that comes out of it. So the focus will be on solutions. And I want to point out that there's not one simple answer for this. 9/11, TSA was the answer, and that was implemented. But for schools, it's much, much, much more complex than that. We don't have a contained area. We've got all kinds of issues to deal with. And to make matters worse, or I should say more challenging, you've got a wide, diverse opinions on how to address the issue. Quite frankly, the whole gun violence is a very broad spectrum of opinions, and it varies, as I learned over the weekend, different parts of the state have very different opinions about what should be done and how we should handle various things, especially with firearms. The third thing is our, I've asked, we didn't have a legislative platform element, and I've asked for that to be expedited. Another thing that came up was some discussion about kind of an off-the-wall idea, and that was to go to the media and ask them to hold hands and not share the name of perpetrators when people come into our schools. when people come into our schools and commit mass murder. I don't expect the media to not report on the incident or the victims, but if there was some way to get all the media to agree to not share the name or the picture of a perpetrator, it might help some of these people who do it just for the, I won't say fame, for the infamy of being known. But anyway, I don't want to go on much more, but I did want to at least touch on that because it's a, it is a life-and-death issue. And again, as I said at the beginning of my comments, I don't feel that we have any flaws in Forest Hills, but I think that there are always opportunities to do more, to be more prepared. So, with that, I will say thank you for your time, and I will ask that this be, the resolution be put on the agenda for next month's meeting.
Thank you. We have a safety committee that meets regularly, as Mr. Smith indicated, and members of that committee include law enforcement, fire, and rescue. There is considerable planning, emergency response. They do a lot of great work, a lot of training. They're partnering this summer with Mercy Hospital and other emergency responders in going through training and event preparedness. But this is an ever-changing topic, as we continue to unfortunately learn, and it requires that we continue to look at it differently each and every time. And in that regard, we're again really fortunate to have Mr. Smith talking with people on the state and federal level and being able to share with us what they're talking about at the state and federal level, and helping us find out what best practices are, because you think you know until you find out you don't. So, we're always looking, and we will continue to stay on top of this because we love our kids, and our staff, and our teachers, and our administrators.
Jim, let me point out, since you mentioned the state level, I got a call from our Executive Director late this afternoon, and the good news is we've got buy-in from the superintendent's organization, the Ohio Department of Education, the Treasures Organization, this is just in 24 hours, I think the State PTA Organization. Both of our teachers' associations within the state are up for working on this, so hopefully something, like I said, I'm looking for solutions, not just more talk, but anyway.
Well, you know, we have a report generally at the end of the meeting from our teachers' group, from Ms. Lawver, and she wasn't able to stay, but she sent me an email that said exactly that, that they're here to partner with us and help us in every way. All right, anything else on board discussion, anyone? All right, then we'll move on to Item 11.1. Mr. Broadwater.
I'm always very good at clearing out a house. We have quite a lengthy agenda under business operations, so the change orders, I'll give some overview as we go through them. As Mr. Fruman always says, the Board of Education does receive the agenda beforehand. They have the ability to ask questions tonight, as well as prior to this, with anything that we have on here. So, 11.1, change orders for Anderson High School. We have Change Order 16 for $4,899. One of those is the Architect Engineering Request to Furnish and Install Glass Block in a Boiler Room Where the Boilers Are at Anderson High School. Change Order 17, the one that sticks out there, the Code Unforeseen Condition. We did have to replace three non-working emergency lights detected during the Fire Marshal Inspection, which happens quite often. So, that was something that they had found. So, the Superintendent recommends the Board approve the change orders submitted by Travelers Bond and Specialty Insurance in the amount of $6,877. For 11.2, Brightview Landscape Services Contract.
Can we do that one by itself, and then 11.2 through 15.1 will be consent agenda items? Do we have a motion on 11.1, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Mr. Jufrey.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Ice.
Yes.
Ms. Barber.
Yes.
Ms. Choice.
Yes.
Ms. Fruman.
Abstain. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, 11.2 is Brightview Landscape Services Contract. The Forest Hill School District is contracting with, sure. I'm usually pretty loud, anything else, so. The Brightview Landscape Service Contract, Forest Hill School District, is contracting with Brightview Landscape Services to provide services to all Forest Hill's properties. The attached contract that you have is effective January 1 of this year to December 31 of this year. If you recall, we did put that out to bed earlier. This was the past year, the first time that we had done that. The contract, as we worked through that, we found that there were some hiccups. We needed to add some things, some additional mowings, some pavement vegetation maintenance, as well as bed maintenance. So, we've revisited the contract, and we think that that should address everything that we were missing. So, the Superintendent recommends the Board approve the contract with Brightview Landscape Service in the amount of $199,809.06, as shown in the attached contract. For 11.3, change orders for Maddox Elementary. Change Order 22 was for $2,173. One that sits out there is Architect and Engineering Request, casework for the band room, which was omitted during design, so we put that in. Change Order 23, $14,011. Owner request to install carpet tiles and base in Room 129 is something that sticks out there. So, that's just a review of the Maddox change orders, and the Superintendent recommends the Board approve the change orders submitted by Seaforth Construction in the amount of 11.4 is change orders for Mercer Elementary, and with Mercer Elementary, we had Change Order 38 for $21,578. Biggest one there, the owner request was to add a trench drain at the gym entrance to maintain integrity of a retaining wall, and that was something that we'd asked them to do for the integrity of that. So, the Superintendent recommends the Board approve the change orders submitted by Spalding Construction in the amount of $21,578. Next, we have the change orders. 11.5, change orders for Turpin High School, and we start with Change Order 31. Looking, reviewing that, there was an unforeseen condition where when we removed failing existing insulation and replaced, this condition was not known until we exposed the ceiling. And Change Order 32 was for $32,230. I would address your attention to the 70/30 split, which was 70 design omissions and 30% unknown conditions is why that had happened. For Change Order 33, for $32,832, was to add 13 cord reels, as well as ground fault breakers, and update the electric panel, and that one was vetted over quite a while. Change Order 34 was an extension of days and agreed-upon cost per day as a result of Monarch Extended Overhead Compensation Delay Claim, and it's a review, basically, an extension for Monarch Construction. Change Order 35, $24,291. The one to review there, the Code Required by Electric Inspector to Install Equipment Disconnects on Five Rooftop or Air Handling Units, and again, that was through an inspector who said that that was required. Change Order 36, $24,095. Architecture Engineering Request that I'll throw out there, that we vetted over quite a bit, was access to data room was designed to be through a locker room, which obviously was not going to work, so we provided alternate access, and that is that change order. Change Order 37 for $23,607. Looking at that, there's various ones. The Architect and Engineering Request, correct design error of placing emergency lighting over where the projector boards were going to go, so we had to go through and make sure that we changed that. And the last one, Change Order 38 for $8,180. The various changes there, the Architect Engineering Request, replace cord reels in science rooms to address the discrepancies in specifications that were there. So, as you review the change orders for Turpin, the Superintendent recommends the Board approve the change orders submitted by Monarch Construction in the amount of $184,031. For 11.6, change orders for district-wide playgrounds, it's just one change order, for $35,606. The largest portion of that was to accommodate at air, the playground in design had been placed outside of a classroom. District said that that was not appropriate. We wanted away from the classrooms, so it was placed in the back of air, and that was for $28,990. So, the Superintendent recommends the Board approve the change orders submitted by Logan Creek in the amount of $35,606.
Before you leave, change order.
Sure.
This, I think was covered in correspondence, but the Turpin... I was actually going to mention. Go ahead. Mr. Broadwater mentioned that, you know, it sounds like we race through a lot of this stuff every meeting. We do our work before we come here because it's not time at the meeting to do it. We spend considerable amount of time, both at the time we get the agendas, usually in Thursday or Friday before the meeting, and over the weekend, and then they hustle to respond to emails that we send to district representatives about the various issues. Turpin change orders are a little bit unusual this time, not in so much in the amount, but in the fact that Monarch decided to do them from October all the way through the present, and they tend to add up more. In fact, the Turpin change orders on this project, through those included on today's agenda, are actually only 1.86%, which is well within what you might consider to be a tolerances job this size. Change Order Number One happened to be a negative change order in the amount of $280,700. So, while it sounds like a mock, we do look at all of these change orders. We make sure they make sense in the scope of what's going on in the project and in the scope of the budget that we've got for the project. Is that what you wanted to discuss?
That's exactly what I want to...
And some of those change orders, the length of time was because it's, that's how long it took to vet through the whole process.
Thank you.
Which we appreciate also.
For 11.7, First Amended Lease Agreement, BEE Holdings LP. Attached is a First Amended Lease Agreement with BEE Holdings LP for use of their warehouse for the duration of the construction projects, to store furniture and other items moved out of buildings to accommodate construction. This agreement is extending the term of the original agreement through June 30 of this year. The rent amount will remain constant at $2,500 a month. So, this lease agreement goes through June 30. It is through the construction project. We use it so we could store furniture that we had taken out of the elementaries, and that's why we had that lease agreement. So, the Superintendent recommends the Board approve the First Amended Lease Amendment with BEE Holdings LP through June 30, 2018, as shown in the attachment. For 11.8, it is the Second Amended Lease Agreement with BEE Holdings LP, and I would explain this as after June 30, July 1, through June 30 of next year, this warehouse is going to be used for the storing of the high school furniture. As we go through the summer, we will have a lot of high school furniture that we'll be storing as we go through the process of finishing our construction project. So, the Superintendent recommends the Board approve the Second Amended Lease Amendment with BEE Holdings LP. That goes from July 1, 2018, through June 30 of 2019, as shown in the attachment. Next, we have 11.9. 11.9 is Renewal Annual Premium of $11,239 effective April 1, 2018 through April 1, 2019, and this is the renewal flood insurance with American Bankers Insurance Company of Florida, and that is through Berry Insurance Group as presented. So, the Superintendent recommends the Board approve the renewal of the flood insurance with American Bankers Insurance Company of Florida through Berry Insurance Group. Okay, we're at 11.10, Resolution Declaring the Case of Urgent Necessity Exists Concerning the Availability of School Buses for the Forest Hill School District. And the case for urgent necessity may sound a little more ominous than what it is. It allows the district to, instead of going through a bid process, be able to purchase six buses. If you do not recall, we received a grant where we could purchase 10 buses. The federal government would pay half. We would pay half. The federal government has stalled that grant, so we are still in limbo with that, but we are in need of buses. So, this urgent necessity, we feel, is necessary that we can purchase six buses at this time that are below market value so that we can get our fleet where it needs to be, since the grant has been stalled. The Superintendent recommends the Board approve the Resolution of Urgent Necessity, as shown in the attachment. 11.11, Resolution Requesting District Membership with the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council. Be it resolved that Forest Hill School District hereby agrees to abide by the Constitution and bylaws of the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council, EPC, and elects to become a member of the EPC, a regional council of governments under Chapter 167 of the Ohio Revised Code, and the Superintendent recommends the Board approve Forest Hill School District membership into the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council. And next, we have 11.12. Mr. Zimmer, I will turn it over to you.
Rob Water. Good evening, Board. The good news is that seven of your principals don't get aggravated by me regularly. We're down to two. Anderson and Turpin obviously are still under construction. Maddox just completed this last month, which makes Wilson Summit, Mercer, and Maddox complete, with the exception of closeout, which does take some time. You go through all the paperwork, change orders, warranties, and all the things that the contractor owes us to close out the projects. Which leaves us with Anderson and Turpin. And Anderson is Phase 4 work, which is, if you're familiar with the building, is the old office area. It was left vacated when we moved into the new office area. That will become a special deeds area for the most part, and that is under construction with it due to come online around early May. We have two remaining science classrooms that were at the end of the science wing. Those are nearly complete. They look very nice, and we should have those, again, probably early May, the end of April. The auxiliary gym work has recommenced. The masonry work is going on, and they're pretty close to being ready to start putting roof trusses up on the top of that building. All the concrete at the lower level has been poured, and this is work that's just occurred in the last 30 to 40 days, as we've recommenced over there. The expectation is the auxiliary gym will come online for the start of school, 18, 19, so this August, but we're hoping that if we stay on the schedule we're on, that that will actually be finished before summer gets into full swing, so early summer. Turpin has gone along nicely. I think next week, we expect to take another of the classrooms that were part of our internal phase, so that'll be complete. That's kind of the old music area. I think our principal's office was in that area, so that's a lot of social studies classrooms and the music area. That comes online next week, all things willing, and then we begin another phase of about 10 classrooms, so that project is proceeding on nicely. That project is due to complete, for the most part, with the exception of 10 classrooms on the very upper level, by start of school, 18, 19. So, my other job is to ask, answer any questions, which I'm always happy to do for you.
We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 12.1, Supplemental Books. Ms. Adams.
So, prior to requesting approval of the following book, Turtles All the Way Down by John Green, we're presenting it to you this evening. This will be a supplemental reading book this next year for Anderson High School, and it will be on review in the Curriculum Department until the March 19th Board Meeting, and that's where we'll come to request formal approval.
Item 12.2 is approval for our proposed secondary course change descriptions for the 2018-19 school year. This is the list that we presented to you last month. It's been available in the Curriculum Department since the last meeting, and the Superintendent recommends that the Board approve the secondary course change descriptions for the 2018-19 school year, as shown in the attachment. Mr. Prepples, just pass out to you the course guide that encompasses all of our courses in high school, just to give you a chance to see how the students view the information.
Excuse me, do you get feedback on that, any, none?
On the actual course guide?
Yeah, no, not the guide, but on the changes you're proposing.
Yeah, actually, we took this information to the Forest Hills Council, whenever the rescheduled meeting was, just a couple weeks ago, and they were very complimentary of the changes, the different details that we added with some of the weights, with the new courses that were coming online for social studies, and we'll be bringing more information regarding social studies later. regarding social studies later in the school year, but we actually got a very positive response.
Good, thank you.
And also, Megan presented at Anderson and Turpin's curriculum night, where she was able to go over some of the details, and that was another, we got positive feedback from families, so. And item twelve point three is secondary summer school dates and fees for twenty eighteen. Last month, I brought forward all of the elementary information. This is secondary only, and the superintendent recommends that the board approve the dates and fees for secondary summer school that will be held here at Anderson, or at Nagel Middle School, with the PE actually going to be held at Mercer Elementary because of how busy our gyms are gonna be here at Nagel, and this will be for the summer of twenty eighteen. Any questions? Thanks.
Item thirteen point one. Item A, resignation. You see three separate areas. Item B, which covers items D, E, F, and H. Item C would be change of salary. Moving on to page two, item D would be appointments. Item E, special service appointments. Item F would be our appointment of our coaches, consultants, and advisors, and that is from pages three through page six, and as I usually say, we really certainly appreciate all of the work that our teachers, our staff, and the community do to support our students in these extra and co-curriculars. On page six, you will also see our student teachers and interns. Item G, and this is new, I had mentioned that you would begin to see this, but we are now approving all of the volunteers, and so beginning on page six through page nine, you will see a number of volunteers, and this goes back through January second of twenty eighteen, and we'll be doing this every month. Item H, substitute personnel. Item I, supplemental salary schedule. I wanted to let you know, there's only one minor change. It really is just a correction. Level G, high school softball JV assistant coach was left off, and so we just wanted to make sure it's about softball season, and we have somebody who'd like to be our coach, so we wanted to make sure we got that taken care of. Item J, job descriptions. I would ask the board that they remove innovation specialist job description. We are not, we had some additional conversation about that, and we are not ready to bring that to the board, so if you would, please remove that, but we would ask that you approve business operations coordinator. And since the regular board meeting, the staffing has increased to eight hundred, three point two-two. That was due to a very slight increase in bus drivers due to route changes, and you should hopefully see the route, the FTE conciliation, reconciliation, I'm sorry, behind me. The superintendent recommends the board approve the personnel items in thirteen point one as listed.
Hold on, I'm fine if you want to remove the innovation specialist, but it is part of the report. When we approve it, do we need to specifically exclude that from?
That can be stated when the motion's made, right?
Yeah, I think that's what we'll do when we make the motion. All right, thank you.
Item thirteen point two, volunteers. The following is recommended with no compensation benefits, and the superintendent recommends the board approve item thirteen point two as listed.
Thank you.
No. We're ready. Fourteen point one, Ms. Ryan.
Student Services has ten items for your approval this evening. Item fourteen point one is a trip by Anderson High School Drama Club. Eleven students and two chaperones are traveling to Northmont High School in Clayton, Ohio to the Ohio Thesbian State Conference. They will be going on March twenty-third through the twenty-fifth, which is right before, the weekend before our spring break. At a hundred and sixty dollar cost, they're traveling by our district transportation. Item fourteen point two, Anderson High School is having sixty-five of their DECA students and six chaperones traveling to the DECA State Competition, which on March the ninth and tenth, a Friday and Saturday, they will be, there will be a hundred dollar cost, and they will be traveling through Great Oaks Transportation. Item fourteen point three is a revision from a trip that I brought in front of you back in December. Mr. Spencer did alert us to the fact that there were several changes to this trip, so we felt it important to bring this back to you. The students from Turpin will be traveling to Chicago, Illinois, March the thirteenth through the fifteenth. Previously, we had indicated it was the fifteenth through the eighteenth. Instead of forty students, which we presented back in December, there are now twenty-two. They will be traveling for the Chicago Symphony Tour. Their cost is now four hundred and eighty-five dollars. It was five hundred and thirty-five dollars, and they are traveling by chartered bus. So again, we felt that those were significant enough to take to you this evening. Item fourteen point four, we have a foreign exchange student at Anderson High School for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Ani Parpo from Finland is hoping to attend Anderson High School next year. There has been a resident host family selected, and Youth for Understanding is sponsoring her. For item fourteen point five, Anderson High School is requesting forty students and six chaperones from the Teacher Academy to travel to Columbus, Ohio, the fifteenth and sixteenth of March, Thursday and Friday, to attend their Educators Rising State Conference at Ohio Dominican University, and they will be traveling by Great Oaks Transportation. Item fourteen point six is our annual agreement with Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services. We, we take this to you annually. This particular agency provides services for our students who have very, very intensive needs. I do need to add here that while we do take this for your approval each year, in the ca, in the event we would have a student, we have not utilized these services for a number of years. We provide many of our own intensive services in the district, but we are, again, taking this in front of you this evening. For item fourteen point seven, Turpin High School is requesting permission for eleven students and six chaperones to, from their Teaching Professions Academy, traveling the same day as Anderson to Columbus for the Educators Rising State Conference. There is a correction to this. It is an eighty dollar cost, as it is for Anderson High School. What was left out here was there is a forty dollar registration cost and a forty dollar cost for lodging, so it is eighty dollars for this particular trip, as it was stated in the Anderson trip, and they will be traveling also by Great Oaks Transportation. Fourteen point eight, Anderson High School is requesting permission for twelve of their language students in grades ten and eleven and two chaperones traveling to Germany and the Alps, June sixth through the fourteenth of two thousand and nineteen, over the summer. There's a thirty-seven, eighty cost per student, and I've listed here what that includes. This trip is being sponsored by EF Tours. Item fourteen point nine, Anderson High School's chorus. They have sixty to a hundred students, potentially traveling to Allentown, Pennsylvania, and this is for a performance tour. They will be traveling to Allentown, Pennsylvania, New York City, March twenty-eighth through April first of two thousand and nineteen, and there is a one thousand dollar cost for this, which also includes the charter transportation and what I've listed there, here. This particular trip is being arranged through beyond classroom tour and travel. And then finally, item fourteen point ten, Nagel Middle School is requesting permission for forty of their eighth grade students and six chaperones to travel to London, England, and Paris, France, April tenth through the twentieth of two thousand and nineteen, and this is part of, this is the few days before spring break, and then it extends into our spring break of, of that following week of two thousand and nineteen. There is a three thousand, two hundred and eighty cost per student, and I've listed, again, what it, that includes. This is a trip that's being arranged through EF Tours as well. The superintendent is recommending the board approve the eight overnight trips and the items that I've listed, as well as items fourteen point four for our foreign exchange student at Anderson High School, and item fourteen point six for our agreement with Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services for the eighteen, nineteen school year.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Any questions?
No, we are just gonna leave the errors just right out. Sure.
When the King, I, I mentioned that the job description innovation specialist should be removed. I was incorrect. That was a different-
Job description we pulled at the last minute. If we couldn't move forward with innovation specialists, being honest, I just apologize. That was my error, so.
Not a problem.
Any questions for me?
No, thank you. Item fifteen point one, Mr. Giuffre.
Report of the treasurer. Item A, donations. Of the fifty-five thousand, four hundred, forty-two thousand, forty-nine cents of donations this past month, thirty-five, over thirty-five thousand of those were by the Wilson Elementary PTO, with much of the remainder being teacher grant awards by the Forest Hill Foundation for Education. Item B is the statement of board accounts by fund, the cash position of all funds for the district. Items C, D, and E are the status of our estimated revenues and expenditures for the general fund, and item F is our monthly bank reconciliation. Item G is our investment portfolios. Included this month is the construction portfolio with Fifth Third, along with our general fund, debt service, and Shanahan Scholarship portfolios. Item H are appropriations, which are being amended to decrease by a total of seventy-five thousand, seven hundred, seventy-eight dollars and fifty-three cents, mostly due to the decrease in auxiliary service funds. Those funds have been redirected by the state of Ohio to, two of our school districts that we were the fiscal agent for, and one is due to a decrease in enrollment in another. And item I is a request to authorize board service fund payments. I recommend, I recommend that the board approve this report, as well as consider the approval of items eleven point two through fifteen point one, less item thirteen point two.
Mr. Giuffre, how do our revenues and expenditures look as compared to maybe a three- or a five-year average at this time?
I, our revenues and expenditures are on target with our forecast, and the report that you requested will be provided to you as of the close of February, since we're two days away from it. I can do that for you.
Excellent, thank you.
My pleasure.
Any questions for Mr. Giuffre? I have a motion, please. It's eleven point two through fifteen point one, but not thirteen point two.
I move to approve items eleven point two to fifteen point one, with the exception of thirteen point two.
And twelve point one requires no action. That's the book that's on review.
Second.
Mr. Giuffre.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Prudman.
Yes, and item thirteen point two?
I move to approve item thirteen point two.
Second.
Mr. Giuffre.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Prudman.
Abstain. Item thirteen point two is a list of volunteers. My wife reads at one of the elementary schools, so I didn't approve her.
You abstained.
I abstained. Item sixteen point one, Business Advisory Committee Report. Mr. Preble.
The committee has not met, but we do have another meeting served. It's coming up on Thursday, March eighth.
Thank you. Sixteen point two, the Policy Committee Report.
Policy Committee has not met since our last meeting, however, we do have a meeting scheduled for March fifth, which is our quarterly review of a massive number of policies.
Item sixteen point three is the Human Resources Committee Report. We've not met, but we are in the process of scheduling a meeting. Ms. Adams emailed us today about some dates, and we'll be looking for a date. Item sixteen point four, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee has not met, however, we will have a meeting scheduled in March.
Item sixteen point five, Curriculum and Student Services.
We're planning a meeting next month.
Item sixteen point six, the Safety Report.
We met a few weeks ago.
All right, I, Ms. Barber's having trouble with her voice tonight. I know they had a meeting, and I know, John, can you give us maybe a, a few words?
Sure. Ms. Barber, I had an opportunity to meet, and we reviewed a variety of the things that we have set forth with the, within the district, so Ms. Barber, we need to talk to you, and we'll also discuss our future plans. Mr. Prudman alluded to it, how we will be doing joint exercises this, this summer with personnel. We have homeland, we actually have TSA involved, we have Sheriff's Department hospitals for the crisis plan, and this will be a large event coming forward. We'll have more details as that rolls out, but it's going to involve parents, students, community, and we will test our plan as effectively as possible, and to, to see where we have some weaknesses, where we need to improve, just like the board was saying. No safety plan can be stacked, and it has to improve constantly. And we have organizations willing to help us with this, and I just have to commend all the organizations that have really been reaching out and helping us plan this activity so we can have a most effective security system for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Item sixteen point seven, Forest Hills Foundation Report.
It's my pleasure to invite De Stone, our super executive director of the Forest Hills Foundation for Education, to give a report.
Super executive director. Good evening, the Forest Hills Foundation for Education. We did not have a meeting in February, but we do have a lot of events coming up that I just wanted to remind you about. Actually, in the beginning of February, we kicked off our Love of Learning Employee Giving Campaign, and that's going really well. I just got a whole stack of envelopes, and I'm thrilled. I can't wait to get home and count it all, so thank you to the, all the Forest Hills staff for that, your generosity. We're very grateful. And then next week, March ninth, we have our Distinguished Alumni Awards Luncheon. We are still taking reservations for that, but if you do plan on attending, we need your reservation by Friday, because we have to let them know how many people to expect by Monday. The public's invited to that, and the cost for the luncheon is twenty-five dollars, and you hear some great speeches from some of our alumni about what these, Anderson High School and Turpin High School meant to them, so it's always a big, big event. The registration for the Forest Hills 5K is now open. That's May twelfth. We, we had a special for the first hundred that went, I think, in, I don't know, I think it went an hour. I mean, people like the specials, so, anyway, it's open, and please sign up. We're, have a goal of twenty-five hundred runners this year. We've upped it considerably. I think the most we've usually had is around two thousand, so we're shooting for an extra five hundred this year, so maybe this is your year to run or walk. And we have our nine holes for nine schools, community golf outing on Friday, July twentieth, and that's gonna be a Friday night, and as it says in the name, it's only nine holes this year, so anybody can do nine holes. So we want you all to sign up and support that. That's, like I said, it's July twentieth, it's a Friday evening. And then finally, save the date for our Swari for Success for twenty eighteen will be September twenty-ninth at the Anderson Center. The committee met earlier this evening, and we're already planning, and it's gonna be exciting, so, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item sixteen point, oh, sixteen point eight, the Legislative Liaison Report.
Got two things I want to report on this evening. One of them is a report on the NSBA twenty eighteen Advocacy Institute and Federal Relations Network that I attended in DC. That was February fourth through the sixth. Basically, it's two board members from every congressional district in the US are appointed to this institute. I'm one of the people appointed from the second congressional district. The purpose is to lobby Congress on key federal education issues, and basically what it is, is two or three days of, I would call it intense training. They call it drinking from a fire hose, and then one day of meetings with our, our US senators and congressmen. We basically prepare presentations on, if you can move the next slide, actually, next slide after that. These are the topics that are, are key for, at the federal level, and I know, in doing this, it's, it's frustrating sometimes-
And I know in doing this, it's frustrating sometimes to go to Washington DC and try and get anything done, but if we aren't there, if our voice isn't there, the silence is deafening, because everybody else and their brother is in line for things. And so it's important for people representing public education to have a presence in Washington, DC. The, I'm not going to go through these, but the top three are some of them that were particularly important. Career and Technical Education. There's an act that's due to be reauthorized that's critical right now, and so we had to point that out. The next two are significant, because IDEA and Title I are acts, laws, that we have to follow. When they were originally passed into law, they were authorized to be funded at forty percent of what the cost is to local school districts. The actual funding authorization, I think this year is right around thirteen percent. Local school districts and local taxpayers are left to fill the void, and so we're in there reminding them of what their obligation is and to fulfill that obligation. There are a number of other things, I'm not going to go through these, but you can see what they are, that we spent some time sharing with, and by the way, we met and had face-to-face meetings with Senator Portman and Senator Brown. I was very impressed that they, we spent two days getting training on this. They were up to speed on some of these issues. Senator Portman has actually authored bills on current technical education to enhance and promote that, so that's an issue that he has personally jumped in on, even though he's not on an education committee. And again, I also want to thank Brad Winstrup for taking time to talk with us. Again, he's another person who is not on any education issues, but is very knowledgeable and interested in issues that impact public education. Second thing I wanted to mention or review was a, this is at the state level, and I don't have slides on this, but you all have at your places, the board has at your places, a summary of House Bill 512. This is pending in the House Government Accountability Oversight Committee. This came out and got quite a bit of attention about a week ago. It creates the Department of Learning and Achievement to oversee primary, secondary, post-secondary, and post-secondary education. What it does is abolishes the Department of Higher Education, the Chancellor, and the Board of Regents. This is a major, major issue in the state of Ohio when it comes to public education. In the interest of the time, I'm not going to take you through all this, but I've got some bullet points of what this will do. But it basically, they can't get rid of the State Board of Education, because it's in the state constitution. They can't get rid of the state superintendent, because again, I believe that one's also in the state constitution. But what this act would do would be strip down the responsibilities to the bare minimum of the State Board of Education. Every person I've talked to, every organization thinks this is a bad idea. It's, you know, you're selling it based on streamlining. Well, when you hear streamlining in government, that's usually a good thing, but in this case, it probably is not, because we would lose, oh, the other thing is, if you eliminate a elected Board of, a State Board of Education, we lose our ability for the public to have a voice in what's going on in public education. This act would establish an administrator by a director appointed by the governor, so it would be totally political at that point. And again, we'll learn more about it, and I'll bring that back to you, but at some point, we may want to take action to come up with a point of view and move forward with sharing our point of view with our legislators. If you have any questions on that, I would try, Scott, have you got anything you want to share? I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but this is such a major one, I thought you might have come across your desk.
It has, but I think pretty much you've stated everything that needs to be said.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Item sixteen point nine is the Forest Hills Teacher Association Report. Ms. Barber was here earlier, and she had a lead, she had a scheduling conflict, but she sent me a fairly long and a very thoughtful email, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but she did say that there are many discussions happening around, happening around school safety and how to prevent further events in our school, and I am very committed to working with the board, community, and school administrators to find safe ways to speak, share, and communicate with students, staff, local police, and our parent community. And as I said, it's actually quite long, but we do have the support of our Forest Hills We're going to go into executive session, and do not expect to take action after executive session. Our next regular meeting is when?
It's different. It's the third Monday, correct?
Twenty-second. Oh, it says February twenty-second, but that's not right.
March nineteenth, there we go. It's because of spring break.
Yeah, March nineteenth, 2018. And with that, can we have a motion?
Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G1, I hereby move the board adjourned to executive session for the purchase of, purpose of considering the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official.
Second. Mr. Giuffre.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
And Mr. Prueman?
Yes. Thank you all so much for coming.